Under our invisible liberty and justice are all.
Nancy, could we have the roll call please?
Mark Strope.
Here.
Mr. Bickel.
Here.
Mr. Bartels.
Here.
Mr. Hollis.
Here.
Mr. Boyle.
Present.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
All here.
Okay, thank you. We have minutes from February 11th to approve.
Should I make a motion on that because I'm not in here?
Well, you can make a motion.
Okay.
Before a motion is made, are there any corrections or additions, revisions or whatever? Go ahead, John.
There's a mini one on the second page. Second paragraph, second line. Mr. Lindberg.
Yeah?
That's Mr. Limberg, L-I-L.
Oh, with an M, not a N?
Right.
Oh, thank you.
You're very welcome. Plus, it's over here again, too, in the same sentence, yeah.
I'll do a global, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, you may make a motion.
Okay, make a motion to accept a minutes from February 11th, 2019 as corrected.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Did you want to absten- did you want to?
Oh, yes, I want to abstain, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, one abstention. Okay, passes. I see no one in the audience, so if there were, we would have a public address for the board at this time, but I'm not going to go read the, uh, that at this point in time. So we'll move on to item number six. And these are zoning board of appeal petitions, number 562 and 563. So we'll take it in order, 562. And this is in regard to Greer Ridge Plaza, Mr. Tal, at 1086 South Street. And I'll read the letter from our town planner. "To whom it may concern pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 11, you are hereby notified that an application has been made to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under Section 350-22A.5 of Dalton zoning bylaws to convert an existing non-residential building or portion thereof to accommodate one or more dwelling units. A copy of the application is enclosed for your review. Please inform the Board of Appeals in writing of any concerns or comments that you may have regarding this application. Note that you are required to send a copy of your comments to the applicant as well per MGL Chapter 40A, Section 11. Your response must be received by the Board of Appeals prior to the public hearing, which is scheduled for Wednesday, March 6th, 7:30 PM in this room, the Callahan Room." And as I see it, it is reverting, or converting, the second floor of the main building of Greer Ridge Plaza to, um, use as a residential, or as an apartment, put it simply. So, I'll open it up to any discussion.
I mean, I think all of us know that it was prior to a residential unit.
Yes. It was once, and then it was converted, and then for whatever reason.
They disconverted it, I assume, so they wouldn't have to pay the separate water and sewer.
Could be, could be.
I believe they removed the kitchen.
Yep, they had to put that back in.
Yes.
And all that, they had to be except the buildings.
Any comments?
I don't know, I think it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I don't have a problem with myself either. So, um, we send a letter to the Board of Appeals that we see we have no concerns with regard to this application? So if you could give us a- and if your voice isn't going to hold out.
Oh, yeah, I'll let you know, okay. To make a motion that we, uh, send the Board of Appeals a letter saying we have no concern on petition number 562.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Thank you. Next one is petition 563. And this, this kind of goes back to petition 560, which there was a letter that was attached to this packet from Nadine Heiser, who is managing member of Shire Enterprises LLC, who is petitioning, uh, number 563, 168 Hensfield Road. And in her letter, it was stated that Shire Enterprises is withdrawing the administrative appeal without prejudice. Upon consideration, we have decided to file for a special permit, which is petition 563. And I'll read the letter again that we received from the town planner. "To whom it may concern pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 11, you are hereby notified that an application has been made to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under Section 350-22A.4 of Dalton zoning bylaws to convert an existing dwelling to accommodate not more than six dwelling units. A copy of the application is enclosed for your review. Please inform the Board of Appeals in writing of any concerns or comments you may have regarding this application. Note that you are required to send a copy of your comments to the applicant as well per MGL Chapter 40A, Section 11. Your response must be received by the Board of Appeals prior to the public hearing, which is scheduled for Wednesday, March 6th, at 7:30 PM in Callahan Room. Respectfully, Rebecca Slick, Town Planner." So from this application, they want to convert, or have the special permit to convert to a two-family dwelling, which it currently is, from what I understand.
John, this is what we recommended that night.
Yeah, yes, it is, yes, it is. That you get the special permit.
I assume that the initial pass you was following, the building inspector convinced her this is the right course to get a special permit.
I would imagine, I would imagine. Any comments or questions?
This is what we asked her to do, so.
Yeah, okay. So we have no concerns or comments with regard to this, so if we could have a similar motion.
Okay, make a motion that we send the Board of Appeals for petition 563, no concern.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made, is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay. Moving right along. We have our budget. Do we have anyone coming?
Highway Superintendent Matt Homelton, he was scheduled to be here.
Yeah, okay. That's too bad, I think he's feeling better. It's a lot of that going around, right?
It was a busy day, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Busy day is right. Okay, well, toss it to you, Ken.
Okay, um, you have the schedule in your packet, and you can see those budgets that we will go over tonight. And when we're done, we'll look briefly at the overall master budget so you can see where we are. So I'll start this evening with sealer, voids and measures. That's 244. Very simple, straightforward budget. Stipend for the sealer is going to be increased by 2%. It's $266. projected expenses are level funded at $5100.
Comments? TA? Okay.
Next budget is tree warding. And similarly, tree warding stipend has been increased by 2%. $46 increase. And the expenses are not increased at all, at $20,000, $190,000. Most of that is purchase of service for tree cutting and trimming.
Comments? TA?
TA.
Next, we have Central Berkshire Regional School District, 41 through 10. And you all should have attached to the budget worksheet the summary presentation done by the school district. I have the full budget, and I'll put that in the box, and we could do that today, and we did a few more details on the budget. But this is a really well-done summary of the operating budget of this school district. And I'll direct you to the last couple of pages. And you can't see the page numbers, but if you go to the second to the last page, you'll see, first of all, the apportionment of operating expenses. And Dalton's apportionment is 60.14% based on the five-year average. And you can see how that translates into assessments. There'll be net town assessment of just over $16 million. Dalton will have 60% of that. And you look at the third town, and there's Dalton, the 851 average enrollment number. And you can see the budget will be up overall slightly by .4 or 5% to a total of $8,245,065. You look below that, you'll see the tentative budget for capital projects. And the very last page is the allocation by town. And Dalton's total allocation is $162,693. If you go back to the front page, we typically decompose the CDRSD budget into three warrant articles in purposes of operations under the Southern Town Agreement. Transportation is included as an operating expense, but we've broken out the transportation. And so you'll see that the operating budget is $7.846,000 for transportation and $162,000 for capital. And of that, about $1,800 is not, is not that excluded after the rest under the budget. So the overall budget ends up by half a percent in the last year. And I can tell you that there's an allocation in this budget of $1 million from the excess and deficiency account under about $1.3 million in the E&amp;D fund. And our chairman may have something to say, because he sat through more budget sessions.
Do you want me to relive this?
No.
No, actually, there wasn't a lot, there isn't really a lot to say. The tentative budget was approved at the last meeting on the 14th of February. There will be a, uh, a public hearing on the budget, February 28th this week, at Nescus during the school committee meeting. So if there are those that wish to voice an opinion on the, uh, on the budget that was passed or not passed, approved, that would be the time to do it. So if anyone from the board wishes to attend, by all means, I will be there. I would think that Finance Committee is usually represented as well. But it was really, um, well, I guess, I guess there wasn't, wasn't a lot to talk about. You know, it was unremarkable, so to speak, during the discussion. They, they did some rearranging of personnel, where you may see a decrease in budget at one school, like at Nescus. There may be an increase in another, but that's the shifting of teachers from one school to the other, because they don't necessarily need that instructor in that school. So, you know, it's like a flip-flop. And there were a number of retirements this year, which has increased the budget. As Ken was saying, they used $1 million of E&amp;D also. And the rural aid funding helped a lot, like $240,000 that came from the state. It was kind of unexpected, and they're hoping for more next year. They're looking for over 300, but that's yet to be determined. So with all those and other things that were taken into consideration, the budget was cut way down so that the increase overall, operating increase, was what, 1.08%? Uh, you know, the, to the, to the district. And fortunately, our, our assessment was even lower than it was last year at .4 or 5%. It worked out very well, and it helped out, as Ken will probably explain, in our overall budget increase and proposed increase quite favorably. So, I'll leave it at that. Unless there's some particular questions that someone may have.
Yeah, John, I just got one question.
Nothing to do with that.
Great job, great job by the school committee. Is there any indication of where Covington is going? Evidently, they're still in this district for next year, anyway.
Yes, they are.
Is there any rumors, talks?
There have been no talks.
Submissions?
Nothing. Uh, there's been nothing, and it's more or less up to Covington to, to do something.
To initiate something.
Because the district has gone as far as they can, and just waiting for some type of response or, um, something from the town of Covington as for what they would like to do or what they are going to do. And it's, again, it's a matter of, um, coming to terms with the OPEV obligation. That's a big stumbling block, and there's been no movement for months and months, so.
And this has been going on for two or three years now.
Yes, it has.
And I think maybe their initial outrage is somewhat tempered, and maybe they're going to forget about it. Particularly with the new school, or in New York.
Yeah, the, uh, well, as we'll get into later on, there, that cost for them is, is fairly low compared to other towns. So I, I don't know, maybe they're having a second thought to leaving the, leaving the district.
Yeah, people change, times change.
And I'm only guessing on that, because I haven't heard a thing at these meetings at all on what their status is.
Thanks.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Okay, TA?
The next budget is 440. Highways, the general highway department. Seven things going on in highway sewers this year. The overall salary budget, if you turn to the second page, is down by $22,985, a decline of 6.86%. And that's not some magic that's happening. It's because when we get to the sewer budget, you'll see we've done a major reallocation based on the work that Ty and Bond has done, based on what, how the DEP and the EPA says we ought to be staffing the department of our size and the town of our size.
So basically, what, what was done, it was just a shifting of money from one budget to another?
Shifting personnel hours into 440, which is sewers.
I know, when I first, when I first went over the highway, I'm going, what is going on? And then it clicked after, so.
What we used to do in this budget is to budget the full amount of salaries, and then we would subtract an amount at the end and put it over into the sewer budget. But it gets a little bit confusing. It's, because even in the highway budget, we reallocate, we allocate some time to parks for an operator. So people's time is split up between three and four different divisions of our highway department. The one remarkable additional expense I wanted to point out to you is $12,000. This also relates to our obligations, um, under the so-called NIPD's permit for stormwater management. We're supposed to sweep our streets more than we do at least twice a year. We've been doing it once a year forever. And a little over 10 years ago, when we had a budget crisis, we brought sweeping in-house. We bought an old street sweeper. We still have a very old street sweeper. And rather than asking for a capital appropriation of something like a quarter of a million to $300,000 to get a new street sweeper, it's cheaper to allocate $12,000 to sweeping, uh, sweeping the streets and cleaning the catch basins that would be contracted out. We'll still sweep the streets at least once a year with our own personnel, and we'll keep the street sweeper we have running.
So this is for contracted work?
That'd be for contracted work. Catch basin cleaning, street sweeping, whatever we need to do to comply with our own NIPD's permit for stormwater management. National pollution discharge elimination system.
Any questions for Ken on, are you all set with your explanation on that?
Yes.
Okay, is there any, are there any questions for Ken on this? Okay, TA?
Snow and ice is the next budget. And John and I are recommending no increase to this budget. Remember, this is the one budget we can overexpend without further appropriation, provided that we haven't reduced that budget from the prior fiscal year. So we're recommending level funding. Typically, we overshoot this budget by about $30,000 a year. We've yet to see how it will come out. We had the early snowstorms, remember, in November, which led to my approving over expenditure of salaries and expenses in February. Typically, it happens early in March. So we're a little early this year, but that's because of the early snowstorms.
Yeah, these guys were out early today, too.
Yeah.
Real early.
Yeah, we felt a lot of weekend work this year as well. Working out, working for Christmas Day. Yeah.
But this also covers the repair of equipment, too?
Yeah, yes, there's equipment repair. Sometimes equipment repair is done here.
Any comments or questions? TA?
Okay, now we have 440. And the way this is put together, we have expenses first. So I'll point out additional expense of $8,000, and that's for building materials, if you use resort manholes, blocks, bricks, cement. We need to do a lot more work on our sewers, and so the highway superintendent has requested additional $8,000 for that purpose. And that's the only change from the prior fiscal year. Now, the next page has the allocation of labor. And this follows very closely to what was recommended by Ty and Bond in the Infiltration Study. And again, that's based on an EPA study going back years, which kind of sets, uh, we wouldn't really call it ground rules, but sets some parameters as to how it ought to be staffed. So you can see part of now superintendent's salaries, administrative assistant, foreman, an operator, and another operator. This will be a new position. So there's proposed to be one more operator's position, and it's 30 hours a week. You see it three times, and that's only because a new person would be going up.
Operator step one or probation?
Yeah.
For all of them?
Probation, step one, step two, it's the same person.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so based on the plan that was in the Infiltration and Inflow Study, you can see down below, we have 70 hours a week. We had actually budgeted like eight in our prior budget, which is $13,000 bucks. You can see it there, and some overtime expenses. $13,000 is about eight hours a week. But we should be budgeting 65 to 70 hours a week. Now, we may not use them all. Now, we'll wait, we'll see as the time progresses, but our, our highway department staff will have to keep more close records about how they're allocating their time here. But we have an obligation to show the DEP that we've, are staffing our sewer department the way it's been recommended.
Is, is there a, a type of plan as for what they're going to do with the sewers? Or is, I mean, you know, is there some type of, oh, we're going to start here, we're going to concentrate on this area, or we're going to concentrate on?
There. I, you know, I think John has it in his mind. He hasn't set it out on paper, but he knows what needs to be fixed. Fixing those things. We've got to do simple things like monitor the pump station on the weekends, which we've never had to do, and record what's going on, so.
North Street?
Yeah, that pump station has to be monitored during the week. We're supposed to monitor it on Sundays, we keep logs.
So that's where the overtime comes in, too?
Yeah, probably, right now, probably will not be overtime. The superintendent's going to take that on as part of his responsibility with this, but that's the plan. Could be the foreman getting called in. But we're actually supposed to, we're supposed to have, because you've got somebody in a confined space in a pit. Supposed to have two people there.
Yeah.
But we're going to, we're going to ask the police chief if you can have the officer on duty just respond.
Standby.
Just stand by, because that's all that needs to be done. It's just a few minutes' job.
Go right ahead.
The repair, we got to make the husatonic underneath the husatonic valve. Where does that money come from? That's not budgeted.
The repair that we did?
Yeah, we still got to replace that valve for $150,000, don't we? $150,000?
Which one, bud?
The, the, underneath the husatonic?
The bridge?
The bridge.
No, the repairs have all been done.
Okay.
And we were given permission by the State Department of Revenue to overexpend our budget on emergency basis because it was an emergency. And at the annual, well, there's two ways to do this, and I'll get into it on the morning in a little bit more detail. We can either bring it to town meeting, but we have to move money from sewage treatment, because that came in under budget this year, to sewer repairs to this budget, 440. So going from 449, which is wastewater treatment, to 440. It can be done one of two ways. Either we, you and the Finance Committee, it's like where the Finance Committee can move it in the last month of the year, or we bring it to the annual town meeting. That's how we're going to pay for it.
Any other questions? TA?
Okay, cemetery is, um, next to a, no changes, a $700 increase in salaries, and that's merely due to the step increases and a 2% cola. So you can see we've got 700, pretty much, yeah, between the group leader and the seasonal health. That's all there is to that. No, no requested increases in expenses.
Questions?
John, I had a question about the last one.
Oh, you want to go back?
Yeah. Look, did I understand that we're going to hire a new operator?
Yes.
At 30 hours a week?
No, it's going to be 40 hours. That's where the allocation comes in. The other part, pieces in the highway budget.
Okay, I was just going to express my concerns about trying to hire an experienced operator for 30 hours a week.
No, it's a full-time job.
I got it, so it's just, yeah, it's 40 hours, but?
Right.
Good?
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan to get on that sewer business.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything on the cemetery? Okay, TA?
Okay, next is, uh, 543, Veterans Benefits. And you will see this is up slightly by just over $200, and that's?
That last one. Was that mine?
Nope.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so that's the requested increase in our budget from the city of North Adams, of course, which is the lead community for the Veteran's Services, Regional Veteran's Services Program. And the, um, other charges and expenses, remember, the money we took in there last year, if we need to make changes to the plaque and the CRA, and the $111,600 out of the Veterans' Benefits. We presently have 11 veterans receiving some uniformed benefits from the town. With an estimate, you know, we estimate it's really additional just to make sure we have enough, resume that round.
It's here. Okay, any questions for Ken on that? Hey, TA? Hey, TA?
Okay. Next is the last of the highway department budgets, and that's parks. And you can see that the salaries are up, you know, a little over two percent, by nine hundred dollars. And you can see the change in seasonal help in the operator that works there. And this operator, by the way, you can see it's twenty hours a week, net split in the highway budget, so that's another allocation. The only increase in expenses is by the beautification commission, an additional three hundred. He's been allocating five hundred dollars a year for as long as I can remember, and they've said we have a little bit more, and Jen put three hundred dollars in. They asked for three hundred dollars more, and Jen put it in this budget.
Ken, can you explain, we have seasonal help?
Yeah.
Is it two?
Yeah, I think it is, Jen.
And they do work forty hours a week. There's no issue with them being considered full-time?
Yeah, they can work full-time, but because they're seasonal.
That's the designation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Okay, TA?
Yeah, the other seasonal persons, and I think we've shown them in parks. So we have one forty hours here, and I think we got one in parks, not in parks.
Cemetery?
Next is historical commission, and that allocation is thirty-eight hundred dollars, no changes requested from the prior fiscal year.
What are we, we're looking at, oh, historical?
Yeah, six ninety-one.
Is that electricity being decreased because we just haven't used it in the past?
Yes.
Okay.
I think what Sandy did was reallocate the budget line items, make it a little bit more.
Wait a second. Oh.
So you see the change in electricity, decrease in electricity and increase in purchase services.
Oh, yeah, okay.
An increase in other supplies, an increase in other charges.
Six hundred, three hundred. Okay.
So just trying to make the, Sandy tried to make the line items look like how the money's actually being spent.
All right.
Jen, one question.
Go ahead.
Does it protect the budget? Do we have a status in that so-called White House over there?
We're gonna, if you don't mind waiting, we're gonna hit something.
No, I don't mind, no?
We're gonna get into it in a little detail at the end of this.
Sounds like fun.
In my town manager updates.
Great.
It's the White House that did golf.
White House on the golf, yes.
White House on the golf.
Moving along. Historical commission, TA?
Okay, Memorial Day Committee, we're recommending the same appropriation, nineteen hundred and seventy dollars appears to be inadequate amount of money.
Questions? TA?
Cultural activities and holiday, we're recommending a two hundred dollar increase. We're getting a little tight on the budget, and all the expenses have been reversed in recent years, putting six ninety-three.
TA? Yep?
Now, let's look at the general budget, everything that's been approved, including the budgets you reviewed this evening, are in bold. And I've also put in the real amount of free cash. So if we go right to the top of the spreadsheet, we'll see our free cash was certified at one point six million dollars. I had, for planning purposes, one million dollars, but it came in at one point six. I thought my goal was highs one point four, but we're actually, a little lower than last year, it was one point nine million. About one point six million is still a very good number.
We were one point nine million last year?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's highs I've ever seen, I think. When we made the two million.
I don't remember that. I thought it was lower.
Yeah. Now, I've also updated the stabilization accounts under the line that just says Dalton Planning Budget. You'll see the stabilization accounts updated as of January thirty-first. And we have...
You raised it since the last meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, stabilization accounts are increased because they hadn't, I hadn't changed them on this planning budget since September thirtieth.
Okay.
So...
So that's what the fourteen point two percent represents?
It represents fourteen point two percent of our operating budget.
Oh, okay.
And anything north of ten percent is very good.
Okay.
So over north of ten percent, that's very good. Now, the major interest in this is looking at CBRSD. So if you turn to the second page, you go down to the bottom, and go right to the middle column, you can see that it says where fifteen-year average is. You can look at the numbers that I projected based on history. And the main difference is that we expected the operating budget to go up by a quarter of a million dollars. Instead, it went down, I don't think I've ever seen this, I gotta go back and look at the old budgets, by twenty-nine thousand dollars. The transport budget is up, capital budget, which is debt excluded part is up, but the non-excluded is down. So overall, again, this ties back to that summary worksheet, the overall CBRSD budget is only up by a half a percent, over forty-three thousand dollars, very modest increase. So what, putting that all together, the additional free cash and the decreased expectation in part of the CBRSD means that if you go to page five, and you go all the way down to the bottom, the middle column, you can see that our levy capacity is just north of a million dollars.
Remarkable from a couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Talking about thirty thousand, twenty thousand.
Yeah.
One way or the other.
Count every nickel we put in that budget, because we're bouncing around our levy limit all the time. You go over that, of course, you have to ask for debt exclusion or cut your expenses. Now, what that also allowed me to do is if you go back to page four and look at the bottom section that says free cash, over to the right, it allowed me to restore some funding to a couple of items, because based on only having a million dollars and expecting the quarter million dollar increase in the CBRSD budget, I had recommended shaving some money from funds going to the OPEB account and the stabilization accounts, but those have been restored to the same levels as last year on this planning worksheet. And we still would have a couple of hundred thousand dollars in free cash at the end of the day. This is a nice reserve. So are there any questions about where we see?
Well, I'd like to bring on what we were discussing when we were going over the agenda.
Yeah.
With regard, our tax rate appears now to be going up eleven cents on the thousand to nineteen fifty-nine. And we spoke about the possibility of making that a zero increase, and I just wanted to throw it out to the board and see what they thought about that. It would cost about seventy-five thousand from free cash to do that.
Right now.
I guess we really don't have to make a decision on it, but it's something to consider before we approve things. If in fact, you know, I don't know if things will change in the next couple of weeks with going over our budgets or not, but they're pretty much set, aren't they, at this point in time? The budgets that we're gonna be going over? Do you see anything that's?
Major, well, debt service, you know, I don't know yet, it's still working, I believe. All of the major budgets are pretty much in, except for the debt service budgets in the...
Okay.
That's the major one that I can think of.
When do we look at that? Is that at the last?
Yeah, we're gonna have a batch of them on the eighteen.
Okay.
We've got the COA, we have the library, decent-sized budgets.
But should we decide that and be able to do that comfortably? We can do it then?
Yeah, we can do it at any time. Would be a recommendation to the finance committee.
Jen, I think that's a great idea, and I think it'd be well-accepted by the citizens of the town, a slight decrease, but that's what you said.
Well, no, it would be, it would be keeping the tax rate the same.
Yeah.
No increase.
Yeah.
Right now, it's, we're at eleven, eleven cents on the thousand of an increase. But if, if we can do it, like Ken was saying, the one thing that we don't know, the unknown, is the debt. It might be something to consider. We don't have to make a decision on it tonight, but I know that we were thinking of doing it last year, I thought it was last year that was brought up in conversation, or maybe a year prior to that, but if we're this close and we're able to, maybe we should consider it seriously.
Yeah, and you can wait to see how the other budgets can be, but as, you know, you may not have to do anything.
That's true too. That's true too.
Well, he's trying to go on the record and say that I'm very supportive of that policy.
Okay.
In case I'm not here, I'm not gonna be here next Monday, so.
Well, while you bring that up, there's gonna be two members not here next Monday, so the three of us hopefully can show if no one's really ill.
Who's the other person that's gonna be? Oh.
Not in town.
We're on vacation together.
Take you some of that free cash.
Wait, 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 we're getting off subject here. We're getting off subject, but anyway, just as a reminder, on the Fourth of March, there'll just be three of us, so.
So we can make a lot of changes.
Yeah, I guess we could. I guess we...
My guess.
But again, going back to this other suggestion, it's something to consider in the next three weeks that we have to meet, and maybe we can do it and still be comfortable with our free cash limit. We should keep a reserve in there. It's always nice to keep a reserve in there, because you never know what's gonna happen again in the year.
One of the other ways to skin the cap, I think, about too, is simply by, if there are, on the revenue section, if you look at page four. And we did a little adjustment like that this year by raising some of the revenues, motor vehicle excise taxes, one of them. You don't wanna be overly aggressive on your revenue, setting your revenue schedule, because if you are, then you don't generate any free cash, you know, if you're too cautious.
Right.
That's another way to skin the cap.
Okay. Well, it's something to work towards anyway. Okay, got anything else with budgets?
That's it.
Any closing comments or questions for Ken before we move on to the draft ATM? Four. Okay. Go ahead, Ken.
Okay. Here's the draft warrant as promised, and just quickly, anything that's highlighted and highlighted through the warrant articles are new, otherwise the usual suspects. The first, and I'll go over them briefly, and stop me if you have any questions. The first one is particular to our transfer station operation. This was recommended by the DEP because the contract with the materials recycling facility, otherwise known as the MRF, is coming to an end. So they've recommended that this year we get town meeting to authorize a ten-year contract, because typically we can only have three, or, sorry, purchasing contracts. So in order to do anything outside of that, typically requires town meeting approval. So the approval to enter into an extended contract will come this year with an appropriation next year. It's likely we're going to need increased appropriations in the next fiscal year, FY21, because it's getting very hard to get rid of recyclables. We used to get a little bit of check back. Now we're gonna have to pay to get rid of our recyclables because of the rolling markets for recyclables. The...
Doesn't leave much of an incentive, is it?
No, it's actually places that are getting rid of recyclables.
Ken, these contracts are only concerned in the disposal of recyclables, not the operation of the transfer station?
Yeah, just disposal of recycl... Well, this, yeah, it'll be a contract with the MRF for recycling services.
Aye.
So of course, all of our recyclables are transferred to all the bottles, plastics, cans, and papers, goes down to Springfield. And the trash goes elsewhere. Most of it goes to Cabant and we burn as far as that. The next article, you remember, we used to have to reauthorize the revolving accounts every year, and there's a long list of them. Now we simply have to reauthorize the maximum amounts that can be spent in any revolving account. That's what the second, the second article is about. The third one is the schedule of compensation for elected officials, the usual article. The fourth one, I took the numbers off here, you know, these can be moved around at your discretion, and sometimes we add and take away, so I just didn't put any of the numbers on it as a front. So the, after compensation of elected officials, that's the town budget. Next article's the town budget. The next article is our grant to the CRA. The next article's operating budget of the CBRSD, followed by the transport budget for CBRSD, and then the capital budget of the CBRSD. The next article is money for the reserve account. Prior, followed by the amount, you know, we were just speaking about this, this is the amount that will be appropriated for the purpose of reducing the expected tax rate increase. The next article is the money we've been transferring from landfill monitoring continuing appropriation account to landfill closure account. Remember, we had extra money left over, was way back twenty years, we moved a little bit of money each year to take care of the landfill closure account, which we'll get to in a couple of weeks, has been paying for that budget. Now, this is the article we're, the next one, it's highlighted, is transferring its own money from wastewater treatment to sewer maintenance account. And that would be to take care of the cost of fixing the sewer under the bridge. Now, you have an option, though. This, we don't need to bring this to town meeting if you choose not to, because under the so-called Municipal Modernization Act, that transfers without limit, it used to be limited to three percent of the appropriation, transfers without limit, can be made by the finance committee and the select board in the last two months of the fiscal year. But it's under, I want you to know what your options are, and I have that on there now.
They both would have to agree? Majority of both would have to agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Both boards have to agree.
Well, then, I don't, you lost me.
I'm sorry.
Why, no, it's only because of, the option then, what would be better to do, I guess?
It's just a choice.
I would think it's better if we could do it at the last two months. To have more things on the warrant item, I think it's gonna really confuse things that the town meeting is enough. Confusion gonna happen. I think this...
Yeah, this is a rather ministerial act, because to settle our accounts, we were given permission to overexpend our accounts, and that occurred in Department four forty, because that's where we put sewer repairs. So in order to make ourselves whole, we simply moved money out of wastewater treatment because we didn't spend it there in the sewer repairs.
And it makes sense to me, but my concern is to try to say that at a public meeting where people are gonna be getting up and saying, well, what are you doing? What are you doing?
So the action is the same?
Yes.
It's just the process is different?
Process is different.
It would seem to be simpler to do it outside of town meeting.
Well, I think so, but I didn't want, I wanted you to know.
I would like to just take care of it amongst ourselves and just die.
If we have the ability to do that, I would, I would do that.
Yeah, sure. How much is it?
It's gonna be around two hundred and twenty thousand, more than that, because it's maybe two fifty. I don't even have a fine number yet.
But the money is there.
It's in wastewater treatment.
It's in wastewater treatment.
Right.
If you bring it into town meeting, somebody would wanna use that money for something else. And you just, I...
And if it got turned down, we end up with a revenue deficit in that... And if it got turned down, we end up with a revenue deficit and that's a hit to our free cash.
Let's take care of it the last two months of the year.
We'll take care of it. Okay. The next article would be to rescind, this is a companion because you might remember that. Can't remember if we did it at the annual or the special town meeting. We had an authorization to borrow $75,000. We didn't know what the sewer repair was gonna be. And we put that article on there. And we didn't remember, we're not borrowing. Moving money around, so we don't. We need to rescind the authorization. It doesn't have to be done now, but maybe wise just to take care of it, take it off the books. Because a borrowing authorization is just gonna hang out there. And can depend upon your credit rating if you have too much money. The next article, looks like I repeated the one above. We usually put on, one should say 2020, the other should say 2019. Sometimes, if it looks as though we're going to need to refund the reserve account in the current fiscal year, we put a warrant article on it to do that. The next article-
So, that may not even stay there.
Yeah, one of them should, right. If we don't think we're gonna need to move money into reserve fund during the current fiscal year, we won't need the article. We'll know better a little later on. So, one should say two, I see that I didn't put the right dates in. So, one should be for 2020, the other is 2019. The next article is simply moving money into the stabilization accounts. And I think we have a total, suggested total is $500,000 right now. Final one is the OPEB appropriation. And right now, the suggestion is for $600,000. That's what we appropriated last year.
Now, to refresh my memory and others, we have a minimum that we should try to stay at as for paying that account?
We'll see that number change because of our funding of our OPEB account.
As it is funded more, that becomes less-
That liability is reduced. So, right now, it's approximately $300,000.
Okay.
Okay, and I don't know if it gets us on something like a 20 or 30 year schedule maybe to fully fund that. But that's gonna drop dramatically now that we've put that money invested into the state.
Well, that's true too. Thank you.
The next article is the annual reauthorization of employment agreements between the town and highway. Cemetery superintendent and highway summary. Cemetery foreman and police sergeant. This is an annual article because state law does not allow us to have a contract for more than a year. You know, the entered, three-year agreements are always subject to annual renewal if approved of town meeting. And the final article is the vote to recess to the annual town election. And you can see the positions open this year. Two members of the select board, the moderator, two members of the planning board, one cemetery trustee, one housing authority member, three library trustees, and five members of the finance committee. The final thing on this warrant is, I drafted a debt exclusion question for the annual town election. If you choose to put it on there. We'd have to decide sometime in March, probably before the end of March, whether to put this. When we finalize it, we might have to do that. If you choose to put that exclusion question out.
That pertains to the April 7th or April 6th vote.
That's right. So, if it passes-
We might wanna do this. If it doesn't pass, it's a moot issue.
It's moot, yeah. Although, as far as I know, it hangs out there.
If it doesn't, if that vote, if it's voted down on April 6th, there's still another opportunity to vote the same thing in 120 days. So, it's not gone, gone.
No.
It's just half gone.
Well, you shouldn't be asking for debt exclusion till after we have debt to exclude.
We may not, that's exactly. We may not want to do this-
That's right. Maybe we can just call a special election sometime, wait till the next fiscal year.
Because a debt exclusion, say, and this is something we discussed during the seven town advisory meeting. That debt exclusion can be voted in at any point in time during the debt. Whether it's before or during paying the debt. So, may wanna wait until, you know-
Doing it at the annual election, you get a good cross-section of the Dalton voters.
Yes.
You do that, you call a special election. I don't even know if we ever had a special election.
Well, we could also-
But you get a minor turnout, which could affect the vote.
And I know I'm getting ahead of things here, but it is part of this discussion. The debt, the total debt will not be assumed until FY '21. Maybe. Maybe, let's see. If in fact, if in fact, the school's vote goes through, construction would start March of '20. And bonding would be, at first, probably a pay-as-you-go. It won't be the full bond unless financially it was more sound to do it that way. You don't know until that comes up. Short-term bond, long-term bond, full amount, part of the amount. But when the construction is done, which is two years after it starts, then you gotta pay the full amount. The full amount has to be bonded. So, with this, we, my, I'm leaning towards we kinda wait to see what happens because-
Wait to see what happens on April 6th, right?
After, well, April 6th, and then wait to see what happens if you have to, if we have to go through that again in 120 days.
Well, is it, it has to be exactly 120 or any type?
Within 120.
So, it could be, it could be, right, 30 days or something, right?
More than likely, I think it would probably be June.
Okay.
I'm guessing. I'm guessing. We haven't crossed that bridge yet.
But the 120 is the limit, the maximum?
Yes.
It could be a part.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's my feeling. We can think about that too and come to a decision later on. But we don't have to decide this now.
It might be a good idea to wait, but it might be a bad idea to call a special election.
I think it's good having it in an annual election.
Definitely, you definitely get a good turnout.
Which we could.
We might be able to do it in the annual elections in 2020.
But then, the problem there is people kinda forget what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think, if it passes on the 6th, it would make sense to try to do it in the May meeting.
Yep, but we can't, we have to decide this before the 6th, don't we?
Well, we could withdraw that item.
I don't think so.
You can't?
Because it's on the ballot.
It's on the ballot. See, that's the kind of conundrum we have. We've gotta, it makes a lot of sense to have it close to the school. But we've gotta finalize this in advance of knowing how it'll turn out.
Yeah, that is, that is a problem. If it were just on the meeting warrant, it wouldn't be a problem, we'd take no action. But it's gonna be printed on the ballot, so you're gonna take action somehow.
Yeah, well, people will vote for it.
Yeah, it's only a couple of weeks, it's just too bad.
Yeah.
You know? It was pushed off a couple, well, pushed up a couple of weeks.
Well, we should mull it over in our minds and it doesn't have to be decided tonight. Ken, the only thing I can see is just changing around who the chair is. That's all on the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the vice chair even?
I mean, Bob wants to take responsibility for any of that, so.
I could've noticed that.
Well, so there's the year here, 2018. You can have the seal of April 2018?
Yeah, we'll pump it up a year here.
Yeah.
On 19. Any other comments or questions about the warrant? Okay. You're all set, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next thing is the letter to state delegation regarding the FCC ruling that we brought up a couple, two, three meetings ago. We have a draft here. And basically, it reiterates what was in Pittsfield's letter, but it also specifies what Dalton's needs are and what we use the access channel for. Before I have any comments on it, are there any comments from members? The only thing I can see is to change it over so that is, it's not "I write to express my concern." It's "we write to express our concern" in the first paragraph. And some other, one other change, a space between the first and second paragraph. And then, the last paragraph, again, changing "I" to "we." And where it says, and, let's see, I'll read it. "We appreciate your consideration and hope you will protect PEG channels in our community and others by choosing not to adopt," I don't know about "many of" the proposals. I would say the proposals in the further notice, which is mentioned above. And I would strike "many of." Does that make sense? And then have us all sign once it's completed. Does that sound good to you guys? So, we can vote to send this pending the corrections or the additions, I should say, that we just stated. Or we can wait until the final letter comes out and then agree to it. I would rather go with the former rather than the latter. And just do the changes, if everyone agrees to the changes, and then get a notification to sign it and then come in and sign it.
Absolutely.
You guys have any problem with that? Okay, so a motion on that?
See, I make a motion that we make the letter to the honorable P. FCC commission with the corrections and additions that we talked about.
I'll second that.
Motion's remain second, so further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Item 10 is the CRA road race, annual road race. Seems hard to believe this is the 42nd annual road race. And it appears to be the same as it has been. Again, you can make a motion unless someone has a comment.
Hey, was there a road race over the weekend?
There was.
Yeah, what's that about?
I don't know, it's the frosty, mugged one.
Was that the one down on?
Yeah, I won it.
Did you really? Good for you.
Yo, Mark, I remember that last year. We authorized that. And I remember, because I made a comment, is this thing weather sensitive?
That's right.
And now I see they were having this, I think it was Sunday. No, it might've been Saturday. And I don't remember this board ever authorizing that.
I don't remember this year.
I think we did.
Did we?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did.
I thought we did, but it was quite a while ago.
It was quite a while ago. It was a long time ago.
Okay. But they were out there anyway. I don't know who's the town.
There must not have been any incidents.
Police were out there.
Okay.
Okay. Then make the motion, we accept the CRA three road races for May 5th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion's remain second, so further discussion. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, I'm gonna hand it over to Mark and Bob with regard to the recognition of volunteers/give Kittredge awards.
Bob and I have been working on this and I got a column to Allison Peters about, we would like to also go to the give Kittredge and recognize the people, just like our state reps do. People that, for the CRA, that they recognize the youth of the year and also the adult volunteer. But in the bigger picture, we wanted to do something for town volunteers of the year also. It's just something we're still working on. I'll let you know more when I speak to Allison as far as us, one of us representing the town and giving the award on behalf of us also.
So, a member of the board or members of the board would present this at the give Kittredge?
Yes. It's a certificate. Like when my son became an Eagle Scout, the board gave him a certificate signed by the board in recognition of his accomplishment. And the solace would be from the board, the select board, recognizing the youth, the two youth leaders in the town volunteer also.
When's the give Kittredge?
We're crossing.
Anyone know?
Yeah, it's maybe at the stationery, I can look it up. It's in May, I think.
Oh, so you've got time.
Yeah, we've got time.
Okay.
Maybe about 10 minutes.
As for the decision, I'll talk a little bit, give you some time. As for the decision on who's gonna be the town volunteer of the year?
Whoever the volunteer of the year, I mean, that's-
Oh, we're talking about, right, two separate things. We want to do that on behalf of what they recognize. And also, I think that we should recognize somebody, choose somebody also as far as a town volunteer of the year. Whether it's from the senior center or from adult purification or one of the boards or something like that. I think that's something else we should look into.
That's a great idea.
That's a-
The only drawback is there's a lot of unsung heroes out there. Fire department.
I agree. And the bad part is, we don't recognize anybody. We don't even recognize anyone.
Okay, so you'll have something figured out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. So, I spoke as long as I could here, Bob.
All right, I'll find it.
Because I can't go any further because the next one's you.
Okay.
Okay.
Putting pressure on.
I know, it's a lot of pressure.
It is. April 6th.
That's a famous date.
Is it really?
Serious, I bet it's a serious. I bet there's an election in it.
Yeah, give Kittredge awards, Saturday.
4/6/19. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's go on to the next one, which is access to the, across the former Barden Farm. And I know I had documentation on that, I don't know what happened to it. But, Bob, I'm gonna hand it over to you on this one because you've been working on it.
Yeah, I talked to Nick. I'm not sure how to pronounce his last name. About the Barden property up there. And he called, he called me, he actually called me. And I told him what was going on. And then he sent a note to Ken and myself and John saying, basically, they talked it over and they don't see any reason the town can't give them permission if it's up to us. It doesn't have to be a long term, it's not a right of way, just let them go get his firewood.
I think that that was one of the things they wanted to avoid is setting up-
They wanted us to avoid to set up a right of way.
Yeah, a right of way, yeah.
And we can, they basically said the board could give them permission just to go get their firewood. Like they have been doing since whenever I have known. get their firewood, like they have been doing since whenever I have been here. I mean, he's not looking to improve the road, he's not looking to do anything, but go get his firewood.
Would he give us a waiver, a liability?
He already has that.
Yeah, he already gave that to us, a while back, when the discussion was first, when it was first brought up, or shortly thereafter. If, if, is it the DAR?
Yep, DAR.
The DAR is happy with it, I don't have a problem with it, and if we have that waiver, so to speak, from them.
Yeah, I don't see why we can't give them permission, just so they'll get his firewood. And if something...
Just refresh my memory. What does he want to do? Go up the road to the proposed athletic field, cross that property, onto another property to the north, cut firewood, and then bring it down?
Yeah, he owns a wood, he owns a woodlot, that's the only way he can get in there.
But that's to the north of our property.
Correct, I do believe.
Yes. Now, I got my reservations about this, but I'll support the board, but, you know, I should say this, first of all, if you give him any, a permission, throughout that, it should limit it to himself and his immediate family, not open it to anybody.
Yes.
Okay?
And I think that's what, what we had discussed before.
Well, I don't know, the immediate family came up, but that's all right.
Yeah.
That's probably my point.
But he wouldn't bring back heavy equipment, heavy loads, back on the dirt road?
No, it's whatever he's been doing for years.
I know, but you would...
If he's been doing something wrong, that's...
I think it's, I think it's like a tractor with a, a trailer, a wood tra, a log trailer, which is not, it's not very big, I've seen it up there, where he does split wood.
The only thing that slightly now concerns me is that we, about 10 days ago, got a letter from the United States Environmental Protection Agency, that's in, in the file, that was, and in which they asked us, are we gonna be testing for PCBs on that road?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. I think it was right out of my mouth, then, because they're concerned that the oil, this is totally different than the issue we started out with.
Yes.
Now we're in the PCBs and the oil, that they used oil on that road to keep the dust out, which was kind of a practice in the 50s.
Right.
Right?
But now the, now the EPA...
This is different from the DEB, now the EPA is asking, do we know if there's PCBs that was in the oil that was used, and are we testing for it? But my point is, if we do something where we ever turned out to be, and we disturb it further, I mean, you know...
I mean, that road's been used...
I, I realize that, it's been used, I realize that, I know, and people have been, sure, I know, but now we have the letter.
The letter, the letter stated, I remember the letter, I remember the letter, but did it state, are we, or we need to, or we have to, or, what was it, was it a question?
It was really a question, right?
Right, they're coming up with a final testing plan, our environmental consultants, TRC, based on their research, said, that they don't even believe that oil was sprayed on the road. So, final testing plan, we may, just as a precaution, we'll probably do some tests up there, but that's what it says. In the meantime, I don't see why he can't use it, if it turns out there is, then he can stop.
He should be aware that we've been asked to do this, in case it makes any difference to him.
That's good, we should tell him that there, there may have been oil used on the road.
Probably, or any of us would.
And, we don't know what it actually contained, the oil.
Right. I think of all the times I've been up there, myself.
Isn't that the place it was been hanged to?
Yes.
Yeah, well, do we see any sick cows, or anything like that, for this, for PCB?
Yeah. I, I would, I would still say that I would, I would allow him to use it, but he needs to be notified, or needs to be aware?
Yes.
Of this fact?
Issue, yeah, just...
And, and this permission would, could be terminated at any time?
Yes.
By this board?
Right.
Anytime.
And it should be, it, we can, we can ask to renew it on an annual basis, too.
We should.
Well, limited to a year, and subject to renewal.
Right, he should request it every year.
But we, we, we reserve the right to terminate it at any time.
Yes, yes. Okay.
We'll send that to him in a letter.
Yeah, I'd like to make one other point. I'm not really thrilled with the cooperation you were getting from the Barden family with the removal of the junk cars up there.
We gave them...
We gave them, yes, we gave them an extension.
Yeah.
But, you know, it has, though, so far the winter hasn't been that bad. And with modern equipment, trucks, they go out and snare cars every day, I see them go by and snare the car here and there, they made no progress at all of removing any of those vehicles from that lot, which indicates to me that they don't plan on it.
Well, they're gonna have to, at, at the end of the...
Well, I mean, you know, he's asking...
We gave them 120 days?
Yeah, I think we did. My point is, you know, he's asking us for something, but he's withholding his cooperation on another issue.
Okay.
And the police chief, as he gave us his last update, seemed to indicate that they feel as though there's some value to that stuff. I don't wanna use your word junk, but that's what it is.
Well, it's crap.
Yeah. You can call about Sears, or Berkshire County, bottom over out there at West Pittsfield, they'll be up there tomorrow and tow it away, and possibly even pay you.
What do you suggest?
I don't know, just the junk car issue.
I know, I know, and it's bothersome, but we did give him the extension.
Yep.
He has time through that extension to get rid of those pieces of equipment, and as I remember, he wanted to make, he wanted to wait until the weather was better. Because of things frozen in the ground, this, that, and the other things, so we said, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we did.
I mean...
Well, it's more I thought about that, it's sort of like Stalin, because the water, the winter hasn't been that bad, the vehicles aren't frozen in the ground, so what? It's easier to get them out when they're frozen slightly in the ground than when in the springtime, when it's muddy, and, you know, it turns into a quagmire.
The thing is, we gave him 120 days, if he waits 119, then he waits 119, he does it. We already approved 120 days.
Yep. I agree, Mark, I just...
I got you.
It's aggravating.
Yep.
It's what you're getting at.
And I'm not even suggesting we make one issue contingent on another issue, but I just wanted to point that out, I haven't seen any progress up there. Even Bennett up there removed a few cars, but that's about it.
Yeah, he has.
Yeah.
He has.
Yeah, like two out of a 20. I noticed also a letter, Bennett, his, uh, bottom holder reinstated his insurance.
Yes.
I don't know, if he's gonna reopen or what, but he even closed for just last year.
Okay, so getting back to the business at hand here, as we stipulated as for what's in the letter, then can, we have a motion on this?
Yes. I make a motion that we send, that we give the Bardens' family only permission to get their firewood contingent on the letter that we send.
And in that letter?
In that letter. It can be terminated at any time, the agreement, and that he should be aware that there's gonna be PCB...
There may be.
There may be PCBs in the road, and it's gonna be tested.
Well, I, I would say, be aware that oil may have been used, because there could be other things, which, heavy metals or something, but there, there may have been waste oil used.
Containing PCBs.
Which may even contain...
Contaminants, contaminants.
Contaminants, yeah, that would be good.
And it's gonna be renewable every year.
You're right, on an annual basis.
On an annual basis.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions?
I should have probably said this during, I mean, I'm for this, if, if you're gonna put fields up there, it may very well be that you're not gonna have, you, you don't wanna have any kind of road right there, or something, you know, people using it for other purposes.
You mean the same road?
You, you, you may wanna change the physical layout of the thing, that's why I mean, you may not wanna have traffic through there, at all.
It'll be up to, it'll be up to, runs park.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, disclosure by non-elected municipal employee of financial interest. This, this goes back to our assistant animal control officer, ACO, who we appointed last, last week, and it's with regard to his other employment as a problem animal control agent. And in the packet, there are several things, but primarily, he's given us, of course, he has to sign it as well, I believe, a disclosure form stating what his, uh, well, the financial interests, or, or what the possible, what do I wanna say, conflict there may be, with him being a assistant ACO. Now, I spoke with Chief Coe in regard to this, and two things would happen if, if we approve his disclosure, and sign the disclosure, is that, one, if somebody needed a problem control agent, which a animal control officer cannot do as, as part of their duties, that a letter be given out, or a form be given out, which states why the animal control officer can't do this, to the person who needs the assistance, and those in the area who can. And there are five, five people listed, one being Mr. Elser's business, they are listed in alphabetical order. And in addition to this, Chief Coe will be making a policy, or, or rule, for their policy manual with regard to animal control services. And he has been in touch with all the services listed on this letter, they all are in agreement with doing this, and in fact, he said they were very much pleased that it was gonna be done in this manner. So...
Yeah, these are, from this area, or from?
They are in this area.
Yeah, the first one's an Adams phone number, the other one's a cell phone.
Right. Well, you got a Hinsdale one.
Yeah, bottom one's a Hinsdale number.
Right.
So they're in the central Berkshire area, and they...
They're in Berkshire County.
Good, this is a good thing to be doing. And, uh, the, the animal control officer reports to the chief of the police?
Yes.
So he'll be overseeing this?
Yes.
Good?
Yes. So it seemed like Chief Coe has touched on every aspect, or on all bases here, with regard to this, and, um, as you can see, the amount of activity in Dalton that Mr. Elser's had is, is fairly minimal, as being a problem animal control agent. So, I'll leave it up to the board.
It looks like great work by the chief.
Yes.
Yeah, he did a lot of work.
Eliminating the problem before it starts.
Right. So, I'll leave it open to discussion, or comment? Eddie?
All right, man, we go with the chief's.
Is that a motion?
I think that's a motion.
Okay, you gotta give me, appointing authority's gonna be, me? Or you?
Well, it's made out for me to sign, since it's joined, it could, it could be any one of us, but...
Well, if it's made out for you, we'll also instruct Ken to sign it.
I'll make a motion, and instruct Ken to sign off on the proposals from the chief, regarding the ethics of Mr. Elser.
As well, as well as the additional motion you made, go with chief's recommendation for the policies in the letter. Okay, motion, second, discussion, further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Thanks, guys. Okay. Give me a moment here. Okay, um, as you, as you know, read the paper, heard word of mouth, there's been a lot of activity with the Wakona School Building Committee, the, the school committee, one of the things with the Wakona Building Committee is, well, let's say with both, the Wakona Building Committee and with the school committee, both committees unanimously approved the plan for the new Wakona, which brings it to a vote on April 6th, in a nutshell, that's basically what it was. All these things took place on February 14th, so at this point in time, with that behind everybody, this will lead up to the April 6th vote, which is Saturday, 10:00, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in, in each town's respective polling place, which in our case will be the CRA. The district, this is a district vote, the district is paying for everything that is related to this, including that preregistration of voters two weeks ahead of time, is that what it usually is? Okay. As for employees having to, having to man that, there will be a number of community workshop meetings, and let me, uh... Let me first go over those dates. Now, the school building committee will be meeting briefly on February 28th, 2019, at 4:30 p.m. at Wakona, but that's only to approve the minutes of the February 14th meeting, there's, that's the only thing on the agenda, it's a, it's a formality that has to be made before it's sent along to the MSBA. After that, with regard to the school Wakona Building Committee, on March 5th, at 5:00 p.m. at Wakona, there will be a community workshop for the, the new Wakona. And during, during these workshops, there will be representatives from the architect, DRA, also the owner's project manager, which is Skanska, members of the school building committee, and actually, I'm gonna be moderating the meeting. And I'm also gonna be moderating the meeting, which is gonna be the same format in Windsor on that same date at 7:00 p.m., so there's one at 5:00, and there's one at 7:00. And during that time, there will be presentations made by the architect, by the operator, owner's project manager, by Mr. Rob on the educational plan, and I believe that's all. And then I'll be opened up to questions and answers, to, from the audience, to the particular professionals that are there, giving the presentations. The whole thing is probably gonna last around an hour and a half, because there's a travel time that we have to get up and set up in Windsor. Following that, on March 7th, in, and the Windsor meeting is at Windsort Town Hall on the 5th. On the 7th, at 5:00 p.m. at Kittredge Elementary, there'll be another one of these meetings, and then following that, at 7:00 p.m. on March 7th, there'll be one at Beckett, Beckett Washington School. Again, anybody from the seven towns can attend this, these meetings in whatever town they want to, because you may not be able to, because of time, because of day, or whatever, to be in one place or another. This is a district meeting, it's not a Dalton meeting, they're just trying to have these meetings in conveni- They're just trying to have these meetings in convenient locations so that as many people can attend as possible. So, any questions on the community events or the community meetings before I go on?
Will these meetings be recorded and shown on Channel 1301?
It won't be recorded by Dalton Community Cable, but I believe they'll be recorded by the school, like the school committee meetings.
Yes.
I believe, that's usually what happens, so, good point. I believe that's, I believe that's all. Oh, also, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna give you these things because it was in the paper just for your own information. During the meeting, there's two there. This is the tax impact schedule that was made out. Would you give one of these to Ken and to Nancy? It was in the paper as for what our tax increase will be, as well as the other towns. And as I said, this was in the Berkshire Eagle shortly after this meeting. And this is for your own information to keep. But it's nothing different than what was in the paper. Our particular tax impact, if this, if the project goes through, as per thousand dollar valuation, the tax impact would be a $2.66 increase per thousand. And the average home is listed at the same amount as we use for our operating budget for the town. That's when Ken figures out what the increases will be for the average home in our town. So as for the school building committee, is there, are there any questions? Okay. Next was the school committee meeting. I've already touched upon this because we were talking about, I've already said that it was voted on unanimously to approve the project plan and cost from the school committee. And then the other big thing was the budget. The, hang on. I want to get the terminology correct. The tentative budget was approved, which is prior to the final budget, which will be approved in March. And we already went over that as for what the increase assessment will be for our town. So I'm not going to go over that again. Lastly, was the seven-town advisory committee meeting, which was on the 21st of February. And at that meeting, we discussed, and most ever, I believe every town was represented. It may not have been a select board member, but it was a finance committee member from, or a select board member from all the seven towns. And again, we went over the Wakona Building Project. There was an update and the tentative budget. And mainly, it was an explanation of what the costs were, why the costs were set up that way, or had been set up that way. The tax impact, which I touched upon earlier, as for when that will take place and how it will take place. The reimbursement rate, which I guess has been a subject of confusion with many. And the actual total reimbursement rate for those items which are reimbursable came out to 59.44%. That's not the total project cost. Those are things that can be reimbursed. And those items, if you ask me what exactly they are, I can't tell you what they are because there are so many different ones, I don't know. But basically, when it comes down to a $71 million project, we're not getting reimbursed for 59.44% of the $71 million. We're getting reimbursed for a lesser amount because not all of that is reimbursable. So the reimbursable amount comes out to somewhere in the neighborhood of $31 million? $32 million?
How much is that?
Like the overall cost?
Yeah.
It's a little less than 50. It's like 40 some odd percent. Yeah, it's somewhere in the low 40s, low 40s. And then other than that, we spoke about the budget. But the main, the main topic was the school. And then how to structure possible in various towns, how to structure a debt exclusion vote, which some towns won't have to. Because the impact, as you were seeing on the sheet that I just gave you, some towns will not be impacted as much as we are, say like Beckett. Their rate per thousand is only going to go up 24 cents per thousand. So they may be able to handle that without any type of debt exclusion or two and a half override and can do it within their levy limit capabilities or within the parameters of Proposition 2 and a half. So that's how that works. So each one has to be different. And that's one of the reasons why on the ballot on April 6th, you can't set it up for, all right, contingent upon or whatever of, well, it couldn't be contingent upon. It has to be just your voting on the school. And whether Dalton wants it debt excluded or not. You can't have it on that ballot. And it's a district ballot, it's not a town ballot. So that's why Ken structured that question for our town ballot as well. So there'll be a lot of discussion over the next month or so with regard to this, with the school building. And I guess not so much with the budget because the budget really is very low and unremarkable as for the district project assay as it sets up. That's my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Just one observation, John. You mentioned earlier that if everything goes according to plan of the building committee, that construction would start a year from now, March 2020.
Yeah.
For the two-year completion.
Yes.
So that means it would be completed theoretically in March of 2022.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
When would the school be scheduled to be occupied?
August of that year.
August of that year?
Yeah.
And just one follow-up question, furnishing the building?
It will be furnished.
And that's included in the?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That is, that cost is what they're calling turnkey. Everything.
Right, that's good to know.
Fields, furniture, building, everything.
Because I've been asked about that.
Everything.
Parking lot, yeah, we discussed that many times. People have said to me, well, you tell you have to furnish it, that's going to be another million. And that's a legitimate question. Maybe that's good that you said that.
Yes, I'm glad you brought it up because that was discussed. And the term that was used is turnkey.
So this, this amount is good cover of everything. And theoretically, the school, all over varietity, and August, September of 2022.
Yes. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. So now, goes back to you. With your town manager updates.
Okay. First thing I want to report to you is that we've got some initial results from our FOB account that we placed with the state. Remember, it was almost $1.7 million. We got our first report back. Now, a very interesting thing happened. Because it took so long to go through the process, we missed the market meltdown at the end of the year. So our money didn't get in there until January. And we actually earned $71,000 on that January loan.
Oh, are you kidding me?
No. Now, I put the report in your box so you can see it. Yeah, you know, some are unrealized gains. Their actual hard cash was about $2,000, but just the gains on the stocks that I invested.
Wow, that's pretty good.
It's remarkable.
Pretty well.
They lost about, by the way, I don't know if you saw the article, they lost about $4 billion in the last quarter of the state pension fund.
But like the S and P, it was up 10%. In January, all the averages were way up.
Going by my Nationwide account, yeah, I can believe that. Another 401Ks, so.
John asked about the so-called.
Yeah, if I read the package, John, I would have known you were going to talk about it.
That sounds like an exclusive property.
It looks like a real buy there.
I have been working on an RFP, Becky Slick is helping with that. Because if you remember, at the annual town meeting, the town approved selling the property, but it's not a typical auction, it might be for a nominal amount. So we have to have some way of judging who the best proposer is. And that's a little bit difficult, and that's what I've been working on. But in working on that, I went back and took a look at the property itself. And in your packets, you'll see the actual assessor's property record card. And it's assessed for 64.6. It has a rather big lot of 32,000 square.
Yeah, 64,000 or 6,400,000?
64,000.
Really?
That's the assessed value. And again, we are not auctioning the property. We hope to make an affordable housing unit out of it. So that requires an RFP and some way to judge it. And that's what I'm working on with Becky. It's a little bit tricky. But if you take a look at the map, first of all, there's a photograph in here. And you can see the White House, it's just under 16 Gulf Road. That's the actual house, right there. But if you look at the actual property map, the assessor's map, you'll see that that house is right almost against the property line. It's actually 32,000 square feet. That's, I think, more than three or four times what is actually required. The actual requirement in R3 is a lot size of 7,500 square feet.
Is this R3 over here, Ken?
Yes, it's R3 right there. And so I'm suggesting, what I'm proposing to you is that we not get rid of all of that because if you look back on the picture, you can see the, you can see the road going into the highway garage, the back of the, the whole backyard of the Who's House is there as well as access to the highway garage. So my suggestion is to square off the lot. You can see now it's like a pork chop, so-called pork chop lot. It has frontage on Bridle Road and it's frontage on Gulf Road. But we could end up creating a lot roughly about 131 by 115, which is 15, over 15,000 square feet. I mean, it can be made a little bigger. If you look at the right side of the Who's House, that's 150. So the Who's House lot is 150 on one side, 131 on the other side. But in any event, that's twice the size required in that district and a pretty good lot size, 15,000 square feet.
Ken, I thought we, years ago, we got a whole, this whole piece of property, this whole corner here.
Yeah.
We subdivided it into the Who's House, where that White House is, and the piece in the back, which is the right-of-way to the town garage, all separate parcels.
My recollection was, John, that only the Who's House was cut out of it. That was the only something.
That's not the way I remember it.
Well, that's what the assessors have. I would think that that would be.
Yeah, that's the.
Yeah.
Only that corner was cut out.
But we don't want to give away or sell the right-of-way to the town garage.
Right, that's why he's.
That's why I'm suggesting a smaller lot. Before I go on and put this out there, if we want to make a small, a lot more appropriate-sized lot, in my opinion, preserve that land for the town back at the Who's House and adjacent to the highway garage, then we need to carve that lot out.
We definitely want to do that, I think.
Yeah, definitely. You keep the access road for the highway department and you give a little more space for whatever the Who's House is going to develop into. It just makes sense. It's town property and you can use it any way you want to, as for town purposes. And it just makes sense, you square off the other lot. It's twice the size of what it needs to be to be a building lot. Everyone should be happy.
I note that this parcel 53, right next to our lot, is not deforming. It's only 60-foot, 66-foot frontage. And I don't know, I wonder if that guy's interested in buying it.
Well, if he wants to develop it into affordable housing, I guess he can. Isn't that what it was set up to be at town meeting?
Right.
Yeah.
What's affordable housing mean?
Well, that's part of what we have to define. What we made, what I'm thinking about doing is, does a lot of people make proposals, tell us what they think is affordable? We'll have to have a, you know, a committee review this. And it's going to be ultimately up to the select to determine.
Well, what happens if they have a debt for humanity interest?
We hope they're going to propose it.
They are, they are very interested in this. I can tell you that for a fact.
That's what they told me.
Well, that's what I've been talking to with their office, yes, they are very.
Talking to the guys on the site over there.
Yeah.
I asked them about their interest and they said, to them, it seems like they have water problems.
What has water problems?
That's house.
About the roof, yeah.
No, water, standing water.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I didn't think so. Whenever I looked, it sure was house water. There's water, it was a.
It doesn't have a basement or anything.
No.
But.
Water accumulating on the property.
Really? I looked at my idea the other day, I didn't see it like that. I saw.
I guess that's up to them to decide. But from my sources, they are very interested.
Is it what the guy told me off the record?
In fact, they have called to find out what the status is so that they can take advantage of this as soon as possible. So if, in fact, we're able to.
So I correctly say affordable housing can mean a single-family house.
Yes.
In other words, have a debt, humanity can acquire it. The potential occupier of the house buys the property.
And pays taxes to it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, sounds great.
Speaking of taxes, is there any, are there any back taxes that need to be rectified on this? Or is it clear or free?
No, that's all taken care of, yeah.
Okay.
Those are all taken care of when we acquired the property. They're cleared all.
Okay.
On the property record card, I see it says it's 7.42 tenths of an acre, so that's about.
Wow.
Yeah, 7 tenths of an acre, it's pretty good.
What do you, what do you think is a, is a relative timeline as for when this can be transferred or bought or whatever by someone?
I don't know, April. We'll have it out there, time for people to post, time for a committee to review it.
Well, that's great.
The recommendation. Yeah.
It's been years, so it's really getting close to you.
Let it be.
Okay, so what do you, you need us to approve the division, subdivision?
Yeah, I should make that clear. We're going to have to involve a engineering surveying firm to. I think we're going to have to do a approval-not-required subdivision plan for this.
Form A?
Yeah, Form A.
What's that? I don't understand.
Oh, Form A subdivision?
The planning board is a short form, just saying that it meets the requirements. There's a map you submit. Hopefully, the map will be accurate. And we can just approve it saying it's got enough frontage, it's enough square feet.
Okay.
So now you draw the plan of the lot and that plan goes up.
And he puts his stamp on it. His stamp on it, it goes to the planning board.
So when we convey it, we're conveying just that piece of property, 113, yeah.
It would be very simple. If it was an accurate map, it wouldn't be a problem.
Now, by way of comparison, you remember the lots we showed on the plan for Old Dalton High? This is even a little bigger.
Any other questions for Ken? Okay, thanks, Ken. Do you have other updates?
Just, John, I'll labor you to see.
Go ahead.
Look at this closely, the piece in the back, 54, is now part of the Who's House.
Oh, 54.1.
Yeah, and 54.
That's the parcel number, right.
Hey, so is that all one parcel?
Yeah. Yeah, the Who's House is the little rectangle on the corner. And the rest of it belongs to the White House.
So the Who's House is 54.1?
That's parcel number 54.1. That's parcel number 54.1.
And the parcel here, right-of-way to the town garage and the White House on it, is parcel 54?
Yes.
Yeah. Hey, and neighbor's 53. Hey, I got it. Great. I like your plan.
Thanks, Ken. Do you have others?
I certainly have any questions about it.
No questions.
Trying to speed things along here, huh? Okay. Wait until we get to executive session. Okay. Items for future agendas. I'm just going down this quickly here. I'm going to take the letter to the state elevation off. Do you want me to leave the volunteer thing on, and you'll let me know? Okay, I'll just take off the agenda date.
The thing with the APR, when I was talking to Nick about using the land and stuff, he told me, talked to Mark, him and I and Mark, he'd be glad to work with us about trying to rent the land up there.
Agricultural plan?
Agricultural plan.
Good. Good. Okay, I'm going to keep the White House on here until we're done with it. There is one thing with the Who's House that I'm going to put on here, because I've been told that they're having issues with... Remember how we were going to get one of those tourist signs from the state, and I gave it to the Who's House committee? Well, evidently, they did look into it, and where the sign would be, which would be on the cemetery side, the state can't put it in. I think it's for the same reason why the senior center, they don't have any frontage there. It's all town property, so they can't put it there. And evidently, the historical commission or the Who's House commission doesn't feel that having it on the opposite side of the road would be beneficial on the steep side. So, I was asked, how do they obtain one through the town? I referred them to the building inspector and our bylaws, because I didn't know them off the top of my head. So, I'm going to put the sign thing back on here for the Who's House, but I don't have a timeline when it's going to take place. And they may, we may get a request from them for a sign to put up at the intersection of Park Avenue and Main Street. So, anybody else have anything they wish to put on here?
Just a quick question, you and Bob, or anybody that's traveled on South Street. You guys notice a lot more water coming down off the railroad bridge, freezing water?
Yes.
So, I don't know if we could find out what's going on with that, because it's pretty hairy going on reading it there.
Their drainage has been that way for I don't know how many years. I mean, when it rains, it pours, and then there's a waterfall, literally, under that bridge. And I don't know. I don't know. I don't remember it being addressed before in the past.
It's seen worse this year.
It does. Maybe with the cold air and that's of the rain, but it's glare ice on it there.
Can we refer that to highway? And maybe John can check with CSX instead of putting it on the agenda here, see what we get, or I can put it on my list, but...
You don't have to put it on there. I'm fine with John just following up on it. It's just...
You know, it's one of these things with CSX, it's like they're country within themselves, and they do exactly what they want with the bridges. We couldn't lower the road. They wouldn't allow us. We couldn't put lights underneath the railroad bridge, because they wouldn't allow us. You know, when we did the reconstruction of South Street. So, I guess if, I'm guessing, with the drainage, if they don't want to fix it, they won't, you know, that type of thing. But I don't know if they can be held...
I wonder what would happen if we just started sending them bills. Start sending them for the sanding and then send them every time a truck gets stopped underneath there, send them a bill.
You can.
What's that?
You can. They probably would ignore it. I'm only guessing. But, yeah, it is. It's frustrating, because they do exactly what they want. When Hubbard Avenue was redone and Pittsfield just did it, I don't know what happened with that, but they got into a world of hurt because of it, and I don't remember exactly what it was. Maybe you do, Ken, but...
I don't remember the aftermath, but I was standing there watching them dig under that bridge.
Yeah.
Former public works commissioner, oops.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't know what CSX did with Pittsfield, but it is an issue.
I have one last question, Ken.
Yes, go ahead.
With the vote coming up on the school and stuff, I don't know, maybe Ken can do it as a town manager update. But I think we should let the voters know also what else is coming at them with the $1.3 million bond from the high school, the $800,000 we voted for Dalton Division Road, and the proposal and the new sewer fees, and anything else coming at them, and what that impact's going to add to this $2 and...
66 cents.
66 cents of $1,000. Just that alone's going to probably make Dalton the highest place to live in Burcher County. Also, I do believe we're still paying on two projects for Makona, and I'd like to know when they're going to be paid off. I think there was sidewalks and...
It's in your packet.
Okay.
The, in your budget.
Okay.
Packet on the back, those capital improvement projects. It has those, and it has the year that it will be paid off.
Okay.
Ken and I did speak of this, the additional taxes and what kind of the plan is for bonding, when the bonding will take place. So, I guess, maybe next?
We'll try to get to that when we take up the debt service schedule. That'll be in the last, that'll be on the 18th. Perfect.
Okay, good. Good. I'll put it down though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just as a reminder. Anything else?
Also, we're facing additional expense for the inflow and infiltration radical. Now, Mr. Roughly is already requesting to fund an additional manpower to deal with the things that he can on his level. But this engineers are going to recommend, I believe, a systematic overhaul and replacement of this existing sewer system or parts thereof. That's going to be a real big bill.
Yeah, it would be millions of dollars.
Yep. Maybe, you know, and I agree with Bob making the case period, the wall wear, everything they're facing. If we had some kind of an estimate, what that would cost to add to the other costs.
And then maybe if Mr. John getting too far away from you, what I'm talking about here, but we won't know that, because the first thing we have to do is a sewer system evaluation survey, SSES. That will pinpoint where our pipes are leaking, where the infiltration inflow is exactly coming from. And then from that, we'll develop a capital budget. First step is to follow-on study from the INI.
Oh, I thought we already did that part.
Yeah, we did, and that's...
What we determined was there's a problem. Now, we have to find out exactly where...
Where? Oh, I thought we already...
No, 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 no.
The remedy.
Just those steps are expensive.
Yep.
Finding out where, exactly where the problem is.
So, this might be a couple of years off knowing that figure, or even have an approximation.
If we could include this in the discussion at the appropriate time, by the 18th, or we won't do it on the 4th, because you're not going to be here, and neither are you. So, it's either going to be the 11th or the 18th.
18th, I would prefer.
And the 18th is fine. So, let's have the discussion at that point, Ken. Okay? All right, anything else?
About, just pursue it one step further. We can already identify some of these costs that you pass on from the city of Pittsfield. No matter what former tax, it's going to be 7.4 million.
It might be as little as 4 and 5 and 1/2.
Oh, that'd be good.
It all depends. It all depends on the figures. I've seen 51 million, Ken's seen 64 million, and we originally saw 71 million for what they were supposed to do. So, I guess the determination has yet to be done on what that cost is, and all we can say is that 10% of that is our dime. So, right? 10?
That's right.
Okay.
We get to pass a little bit on in his deal.
Yeah, that's right. It may be as low as 9%.
About 10%, 10% of our 10%.
Yep.
So, you know, yeah.
Anyway, it's probably going to be anywhere between 5 and 7 million dollars.
Yep.
Just need to get a hold of that water here. We'll take care of it.
Okay, anything else? Anything else? You know, this is not my fault for you guys dragging this on.
Okay, yeah.
Okay? Anything else? Not that I want to push things along, because I just love being here.
Thank you.
So, anyway, we're good. I'll put those things on the items for future agendas and get that done for next week. Okay. Remarks to the select board. Do we have any more?
We're done.
We're done?
That's my remark.
Are you good, Ken?
Well, I just want to say one little quick thing. I'll say it real quick.
Go ahead.
In my efforts to put together this program, the memorial service for Mitchell Dalton, memorial service on June 1st.
Yes.
11 o'clock. The reason I say that is to remind you, 11 o'clock, Saturday, June 1st, ran across a little snag while pricing a plaque, a suitable plaque, to be attached near the bridge, you know, highlighting, commemorating. Found out that, and using the old one as an example, of plaque cost between 7, no, 1,700, 1,900. That definitely led to a little dismay on my part. But through some sage advice from Mark Strout and his wife, Deanna, and my son, they advised me and Ken Walto that engage in a GoFundMe page, which I probably did with their able technical assistance. And as of this evening, we've raised 1,600 and some odd dollars.
Oh, wow.
In 10 days.
Wow.
Yep. So, I wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
And I got one other little snag, and I worked it out with Ken. The money, if I get out there and buy it, I have to pay the sales tax.
Oh, you... That's a town expense.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to work out with Ken.
He uses EIN?
Yep. But that's a minor thing. So, I wanted you to know about that. The outpour of the community's been fantastic.
That's good.
Mark just told me, some guy even...
We're actually up to over 1,900 now.
Wow.
So, we're over 1,900, and thanks to John and his son and Deanna and them and social media.
That's very impressive.
Yeah, 10 days since our last meeting.
That's great.
I didn't even know about it.
Well, it's, well, it happened because we had that week off, and I started it right before that, so I had that meeting, and it just took off, thanks to people circulated on Facebook, which I certainly liked the expertise, but Mark...
The power of social media.
Yep, it is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. The announcements. Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which went into effect November 15, 2018, and will be in effect until April 15, 2019. I hold office hours by appointment at the Dalton Town Hall when available, and at the Dalton Senior Center every fourth Thursday of the month from 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM. And just as a reminder, I'll be there this Thursday at that time at the Dalton Senior Center. To reserve time at the Dalton Senior Center, please call 413-684-2000. For further information or to schedule other appointments, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or my home phone number at 413-684-2526. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Green Dalton Committee is looking for new members. If interested, contact the town manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go into executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, the Highway Association, Patrol Officers, Highway Superintendent, Police Sergeant, Highway Foreman, and that return to open session.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Strout?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Will enter adjournment for a few minutes. Thank you.